Good evening and welcome to the June 21st study session. This evening, we have three items on the agenda. Our first item is a report in the Kansas Department of Transportation, reference our Centennial Bridge.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, as everybody knows, the replacement or the potential replacement of the Centennial Bridge has been a hot topic over the last couple of years for the city. The Kansas Department of Transportation has funded an advanced preliminary engineering study, and over the last 18 months, a steering committee has met to evaluate location options and funding options for the project. There was also a series of public meetings here and in Platte County. The only thing remaining is a formal presentation to the commission over a lot of what's been discussed over that time. Tonight, we have Chris Norton from the Kansas Department of Transportation, Mark Caneely with Trans Systems, the firm that KDOT has hired to go through this process, and then Thad Kosmicki from Parsons Transportation Group. They're going to address the concept of the bridge, some about the location, the layout, the look and all that, and then they will also talk about what has come to the surface as the funding source should we want to move forward with a bridge. Following tonight's presentation, sometime in July, KDOT would like from the city commission two different things: a resolution either supporting or not supporting the concept for the bridge, meaning the location, the layout, and those aspects, and then something supporting or not supporting tolling as the funding option for this bridge. And I'll give you more information prior to that meeting about what we're looking for. But tonight, they're just here to present and answer any questions you have before you're able to go back to the constituents to get feedback.
Thanks, Paul. On behalf of KDOT and the project team, thank you and for allowing us this time, and we appreciate the opportunity to go over some important information that we've learned on the bridge study over the last year and a half or so, and I'll turn it over to Mark Caneely with Trans Systems.
Thanks, Chris. From the very beginning of the study, we've placed an emphasis on three interrelated items: the bridge, specifically its location, the type of the bridge, and its probable cost, and financing. And I want to emphasize that tolling is an option that's being considered. And when we look at tolling, we look at a tolling and revenue study, and that is usually done in three levels. The referred to as Level 1, 2, and 3. We are in Level 2. The first step is a broad feasibility study. If a project passes that level, it proceeds to a more detailed second level that utilizes a travel demand model and makes specific assumptions about costs and revenue over a long period of time for bonding. The third step is an investment-grade level analysis that is only done when a project is ready to be financed with tolling and seeking a bond rating from banks. So what we're looking at when we're talking about financing, we have really two aspects to it. We have a financial feasibility associated with the costs and potential revenue from tolling, but we also have institutional feasibility associated with legal components because it's a by-state bridge, and also political support from cities and counties that are directly adjacent to it. Our third step is really in environmental documentation and permitting, and that is very much dependent upon the implementation schedule and the financing. So these are things that are all very much interrelated. The replacement bridge utilizes four lanes with shoulders and a shared-use path. The shared-use path is shown on the south side to connect to existing sidewalks on Metropolitan Avenue and Fourth Streets in Leavenworth and a proposed trail in Platte County, Missouri. The location of that trail is to be determined, but it would connect to the Western Bend State Park trailhead north of Bevillen. We've shown, and you can see from the model that we have, that includes the bridge location, the lengths of spans, but also the trail and how that might loop back to the levee on the Missouri side to connect to a potential Missouri River Trail along the levee. The bridge type is what's called a honched steel beam with pre-cast, pre-stressed concrete beam approaches, and the design incorporates a shift in the location of the navigational span. And that shift has been coordinated with the Coast Guard and shipping interests and was found actually to be an improvement because it avoided obstructions on the Missouri side of the river. This allows us to develop probable costs for construction as well as for program. For our costs, we've included the cost to remove the existing bridge, new bridge construction, new roadway construction, tolling components, as well as utility work and right-of-way work. When we're evaluating tolling, we want to make sure that what we're proposing is legally allowed. For this location, Missouri law does not allow tolling of the approach roadway as it is an existing state highway. So Missouri law allows tolling for the bridge. So when we start talking about some of our costs, we have to separate our costs into the various components that could be allowed for tolling. When we've discussed this project with MoDOT, what they have said to us is that they have no plans for other improvements to Route 92 to I-29 or to Route 45 to I-435. They mentioned that they have numerous other bridges in the state of Missouri that are in worse condition than this bridge, and that they have limited available funds to address other bridges in that worst condition. So what they're indicating to us is that there is no funding for this project in the next five to 10 years. And when it comes to tolling legislation, it may require a statewide vote to enact tolling in Missouri. On the Kansas side, from an institutional perspective, KDOT has a procedure that it would need to go through to create a tolling authority. It would get approval from its legislation to establish an authority with a, assuming that we can provide a tolling and revenue study that is suitable, it would then establish its rules, policies, and ordinances for an authority. KDOT would continue to maintain that bridge, but it would likely contract out toll collection, most likely to KTA, and the initial thought would be to retire the tolling once the bonds are paid off, though that's a policy that is yet to be decided by the authority. The other key thing I would want people to remember is that tolling cannot start until an improved facility is open. When we talk about toll collection, a lot of people ask, "How would it work?" It's not the little booth that you might remember when the original Centennial Bridge was told. It would be an overhead gantry system with electronic readers, cameras, sensors, and recorders that would provide for no cash transactions. What that means is that there's no stopping or even slowing down. There are loads of assumptions that are taken into account regarding traffic volumes, the types of traffic, the rates that would be charged for tolling, potential diversion, and one could say that these are all subject to change. But I want to emphasize that these assumptions have been developed to be acceptable in the current marketplace for lending institutions. And we also have included funds in reserve for the tolling authority to account for any unforeseen changes. When we're looking at what we're collecting, we're also looking at what we're expending over time in terms of operations and maintenance over various life cycles. The biggest assumption probably that we're making is when the project would be even open to traffic. Based upon environmental documentation process, the duration in clearance, as well as any design, right-of-way acquisition and construction, we would have the project at its earliest opening in 2022. If one were to wait for traditional funding sources, that opening date could be in the early to mid 2030s. So tolling presents an opportunity to accelerate the construction of a replacement bridge. The financial analysis that has been conducted states that with a basic tax-free exempt bond, there's a 20% gap in a fully funded project. That means it's 80% financially feasible. However, if we were to pursue a TIFI alone, which is a Transportation Infrastructure Financing and Innovation Act low-interest loan, that could cover that 20% gap, and we could be fully funded. So with two funding sources, tolling and a loan, the project is financially feasible. It's also worth noting that the financial analysis is constantly changing with market conditions. We conducted that analysis in February, and changes in rates have already occurred, so it's something that would need to be continuously updated. Comments from public meetings and online surveys indicate that tolling is an emotionally charged issue. We've heard from both sides, but more were opposed than in favor. Another common comment that we heard was on bicycle and pedestrian accommodations, many in support of the shared-use path as shown on the project. In terms of an environmental process, there are potentially three impacts that we would need to address. First would be a historic resource component, since the existing Centennial Bridge has been found to be eligible as a historic resource. Parkland impacts to Riverfront Park below the bridge, and if tolling were to be included in the environmental document, financial impacts to low-income users of the bridge with associated environmental justice census tracts would need to be evaluated as well. I know that's a brief summary to cover a lot of information. I hope it gives you a reasonable assessment of the project and the process. A lot's been going on to get to this stage, yet there's still more to be done, and we'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
I have one. In your public comments, did anybody give you feedback regarding the look of the bridge? Because I know the arches are really an iconic feature of the town. Was there any feedback on that?
Yes, several people commented on the appearance of the bridge. There was a lot of sentiment that recognized the existing bridge as an iconic and sort of branded element for the city, and so we did receive comments on that.
Sir, you know, one of my main issues is, you know, possibly we do need a bridge at some point, but building a four-lane bridge going into a two-lane country road over I-29 just doesn't seem to make sense unless we get MoDOT onboard to make 92 four-lane into I-29 or 45 four-lane into I-435. It just, you know, have a nice bridge at $80 million going on a country road, basically what we have now with no curves or shoulders to speak of. And I know, I've traveled to Washington many times over the last seven years. We've had meetings with the Federal Highway Administration, and I know the Federal Highway Administration doesn't necessarily fund it. They give money to the states and KDOT or MoDOT, and they determine how that money is used, even though it's federal money. And MoDOT just isn't onboard, and we've talked with Senator Blunt's office, Representative Graves' office, and just can't get any traction. So building a four-lane bridge going into a two-lane country road, I don't know, I think it's overkill right now unless we can get Missouri onboard. And obviously, an $80 million nut is big, and getting somebody to come up with $80 million is tough. Obviously, KDOT doesn't have the money anymore, and they probably never had $80 million. That's a lot. They probably had $80 million, it's over a billion, but, you know, getting that on a priority list, I don't see happening. Tolling, obviously, is among most people's a nonstarter. Let's say right now, the average bridge traffic per day is 17,000 cars a day, and let's move it up over a 20-year average, let's say it averages 20,000 cars a day, $40,000, and $80 million plus interest, call it 100 million, it'd be about an eight-, nine-year payback just at, you know, $2 per car, and I imagine it's more for a truck, but it's about eight or nine years' worth of tolling at a minimum, and it could be more. And I know many people are vehemently opposed to tolling. The bridge was originally commissioned in 1954, opened in 1955, and was told until it was paid off, I think, until '73 or '74, there was a toll on the bridge, and once those bonds were paid off, then it became a free bridge. And the bridge was necessary at the time, because all we have is the old Fort Bridge. But building one into a two-lane highway, I mean, I appreciate all the work it did, but I just don't see it going until we can get someone else, if we can get that highway, four-lane highway into I-29. The thing that this city commission, and I know we argued in DC quite a bit with our legislators and our Kansas legislation as well as the Missouri legislation, and quite frankly, probably just given lip service on it, no one ever took the ball and ran with it, is one argument we could make to kind of force the money from the feds is that bridge is very key to the economic security of the United States, not the national defense or the national security. But like in the flood year of '93, the flood year a couple of years ago, 2011, whatever it was, I-29 north of Tracy up to north of St. Joe was basically closed because it's flooded, because it's in those lowlands. 100% of the truck traffic going north up into Minnesota, all the way into Canada, had to cross the Leavenworth Centennial Bridge, go up north of Atchison, cross back on I-29 either in Kansas or Nebraska. It caused such a backlog that there was major repair work going on in the bridge, and I remember I was mayor at the time, we called Governor Sandberg, Brownback's office and talked to Jim Pickens, whoever the director of KDOT was at the time, said, you know, "Can you please pull the crews off because we're down to one lane?" And they said, "If you pull it off, we're going to delay that work until next spring." So we have to. And they pulled those crews off, and, you know, obviously, that work continued, delayed the work on that. But it is so important to the economic security of the United States that I'm hoping that we can get enough federal legislators to realize that, come to grips with it, because we do need that road, I-29, a four-lane road, I-29. But unless we have it, I don't see the wisdom in building a tolling bridge.
I disagree with you, Mark. Yeah, I really do. And it's, part of it is because that flooding issue and with the security issue of the fort. And I know Missouri's been hard, and I mean, they've got like a backlog of roads and, you know, and there's never, ever enough money to go around, and there never, ever is going to be enough money to go around. But if you look at the growth that's around the airport and the growth that's happening in Platte County, I think they're going to have to address that road sooner than they think they are. It may not be on their radar screen now, but we're still looking at, you know, 15 years down the road where that's, they're only doing maintenance, and in 15 years, we're going to need to be looking at a replacement for that bridge. That's not, it seems far away, but it's not. I've been on this commission 12 years, and it's gone by like crazy.
Did Missouri help with the original bridge, or was it always just us?
It was always Kansas.
Always in Kansas?
No, did they help, have they funded? No.
I believe the tolling, and this is one of the interesting parts, as I understand it, that the tolling was for the bridge as well as the relocation of 92 and the construction of Spur 45 because those were new roadways leading to the bridge.
Okay.
However, the case that we're talking about here, the difference is that we'd be tying into the existing state highway. That's the main difference. So in Missouri, they have some other bridges in the Lake of the Ozarks that is told, it does include the roadway, but again, that's a new roadway. So if we were in a different location, if this was a bridge to Lansing per se, and you had to build the approach to connect over, that roadway could be told. So this is different. So I believe in the '54, '55 that the tolling authority included the roadway approach and the bridge.
And I still believe that the way to get this accomplished is continue to lobby the federal government, our legislators, our representatives in Washington and the Missouri representatives, and maybe on a nationwide basis, that this bridge, this road is critical to the economic security of the United States. It is not to the national security. We already were told that because Fort Leavenworth is not a troop post. If it was Fort Riley that they had to mobilize and send tanks and troops off to war, then it would fall under the auspices. So if we can get it under the economic security, which I think is just as important as the national security at times, if we can push that and get people onboard, I think all of a sudden, the money, not all of a sudden, but I think the money could appear.
And I think that's old-world thinking. I mean, there isn't anything now that's not done where there's not local funds or a local match and a state match, and I think, yeah, we should keep looking for federal dollars to do this, but that's not how projects are done anymore. Everybody gets their piece of the pie that they pay for a project, and even, this didn't even get off the ground until we talked about, started talking about tolling, which would be our contribution for it. It's not going to happen unless we have part of the funding source on this, not any road project that we do now. We're always looking at a local funding source.
And I agree, and I don't think it's going to get off the ground if it goes tolling because I just don't think that anybody has the appetite for that. But there are roads that are completely paid for by the federal government because of national security issues. One in particular, and you can correct me, I'm sure you know more about than I do, when Fort Riley, you still drive straight through Fort Riley. Now, obviously, after 9/11 and different security measures, they had reroute out to I-70, they should circumvent that. That was not paid for by local funds. That was granted by the saying, you know, "This is for national security," and it was paid for. Local money didn't have to go in because they considered it a national security concern, and that was done. And somehow, if we can push the economic security, is, I just think, one of the ways to go after it. I just don't think there's an appetite for tolling. And who would make the decision on tolling again? Obviously, not the city of Leavenworth, but would it be the state legislature? Kansas State Legislature would have to make that decision. Does go to a vote, as in Missouri. So the city commission, I mean, we'd have input, we'd say, "Please don't vote for it or please vote for it," but that'd be all our input, and while the Kansas House and Senate would have to make that call.
Yeah. Did, during your talks with MoDOT, did they give you any indication on 92? Is it totally off the table, is something they're going to think about in five to six years? Are they making any type of plans?
They're not in a planning mode at this moment. They seem to be in a reactive mode.
Yeah, they've been that way for quite a few years.
Yeah.
On the tolling, you're going to hit the average person for $100 a month that just comes over here and goes to work, just to come here and go back. That's not going to sit well with the public. Of course, those aren't Leavenworth residents, but those are Missouri residents, so I think MoDOT needs to get involved and take care of their constituents at the same time.
How much life is left in that bridge right now?
KDOT estimates, after the 2011 repairs, its estimated life is probably in the 2030s to even 2040s.
With just, with regular maintenance, regular maintenance?
Sure, and it is in good structural condition. It certainly has some narrowness and some capacity issues.
But structurally, that thing's not about to fall.
Correct.
And there's rumors saying, oh, if you look underneath it, it's going to fall apart.
Well, I think that was all addressed the last time that they did the major work on it.
Yeah, so it's structurally sound with regular maintenance for another 30 years.
Yes.
And that makes it another hard sell. That makes it a very difficult sell. Say, we've got something that's good for another 30 years, now, you know, I think it would be great to have it if had the other end of it. That's my biggest concern.
And I agree with Mark, just, I can't fathom putting the bridge in place going down to the two-lane road that's there.
It's a road, not even a highway.
Well, and if the commitment or the availability was there by MoDOT, the plan is to carry the four lanes to the split.
Just, yeah, 500 meters across the bridge.
Well, yeah. There's about 7,000 that go on 92 and 7,000 go on the spur. So there is some logicalness to it, but yes.
And I think that what we've been noticing over time is that the traffic volumes have been shifting between 92 and 45.
Sure.
That five or 10 years ago, it was more of a 2/3 to Route 92, 1/3 to 45. Now it's about 51, 49, and I think when you take a look at the growth in Missouri, and then also, if you're looking at what has MoDOT done recently, they've made improvements to four-lane 45 over to I-435. So I think their growth is happening more towards their south, and you're seeing the shift of traffic to 45 away from 92.
One thing we did, I don't say argue, in Washington, that we discussed from Washington, that building a four-lane from 92 over to I-29, you know, through Platte City, through Tracy, through that area, would be one of the, per mile, one of the cheapest highways to be built because of land acquisition, because we're looking at farmland, we're not displacing a bunch of homes, and there's like eight property owners, and eight might be, you know, I'm grabbing that out of the air, but as for major displacement of, you know, cities, houses, sewers, et cetera, I mean, it's very right to make that a four-lane from an engineering standpoint, land acquisition. But once again, Missouri's got to get onboard, and all of our discussions with them, basically what you're saying, it's a nonstarter, that's not even on their radar.
There are some engineering issues associated with 92.
Yeah, I'm simplifying it.
And I think when you take a look to redo the profile, that you would need much more right-of-way because you'd be basically leaving the existing road in place to build a new road to then remove the old road.
Yeah, quite a bit of it still. I mean, the cost of it would be a little bit cheaper. So what do you, what, do you expect action from us, or are you just, what are you looking for?
Well, like Paul had mentioned earlier, I think there's two things that, over the next month, month and a half, you know, KDOT's nearing the end of this study, and certainly there are factors that we have to, and political factors that we have to consider besides the cities, but there's two things. This study, while tolling may be a nonstarter, this study did have positive aspects, and I think we've got a sound, valid concept here that whether this project implemented eight years from now or 38 years from now, everybody knows, or at least has, that this immediately north should work and is about the best solution. So that's one positive aspect. So whether we get a formal resolution of support for, you know, at least the concept, then the next big question is, which is a big factor for KDOT to consider, whether our secretary would move forward with, go into the legislature, is, does one of the biggest stakeholders on the project support the idea of tolling to implement it sooner rather than later? So those two things, like Paul had mentioned, support or non-support for the concept, support or non-support for tolling. It may be one and one, it may be 0 and 2, 2 and 0, I don't know, but, and sometime within the, in July. And even if you support both, I can't guarantee that KDOT would move forward.
Sure.
There are some issues, certainly with MoDOT. 92 is on the 325 plan. MoDOT has, you know, a lot of other stuff going on. You know, if we did pursue tolling, you know, certainly we would have to know, is MoDOT onboard? We wouldn't without knowing that. And of course, at our level, we've met with some fairly high-up MoDOT people, and it's not looking good on their end, but we wouldn't pursue tolling if we didn't know for sure that they were onboard.
I understand.
And they have been involved in this.
Sure, I know they have. We have discussions with them.
They've been at the public meetings, and, you know, they've always been good partners with us, and we still have, we have a good relationship with MoDOT, and, you know, KDOT's been... been really a great place to work for the last thirty years. And we always kind of snickered at MoDOT now. We're kind of in the same boat as, as MoDOT has been for decades.
You look at the bridges in Kansas City area, St. Louis area, this wouldn't really get pushed way down.
Sure.
Just on traffic count.
Yep.
Well, if, you know, if you're looking at, as you mentioned and Paul mentioned, to get a reaction from us by the latter part of July, that gives us enough time to reach out to constituents and get some feedback. And, because we do represent them. It's not what we want.
Sure. And if there's any questions that come up that you need answered, hopefully not a lot, but there might be, you know, Paul Kramer or Mike McDonald has our contact. You could go through them and boom, with an email, we could probably have some answers or some, we don't know, answers back promptly.
Last thing I want is another flood. But I also am not naive enough to believe there will not be another flood. I figure within the next three or five years, there'll probably be another major flood in the Missouri River. And it may close I-29 again. And, you know, maybe that, as this happens again, maybe all of a sudden, we can get some action out of Washington and say, oh, we've got to correct this. And, how to say a flood would be a godsend, but it'd be another wake-up call. Because we did have some wake-up calls on the last flood, that once the waters recede, you know, that's, that's yesterday's news.
It's not urgent.
Yeah, it's yesterday's news. And then when it happens again, I say, oh, my God, what are we going to do? Well, I think it's a very good study. All the work you've done and...
I like the concept of the bridge.
Yes, me too.
I'd like to take that model and sell it to a guy that has HO trains and, you know, can set it up on his HO train set. That's, that's a pretty piece of work there.
I know a bridge engineer in Pecos would say no to that. He really wants that model.
Get yourself a three-D.
Are they, and you're still concerned about the channel? The, it's, you know, one of the inland waterways in the United States. But only once in the last twenty-five years has a barge gone down that river. And I think a concrete barge went down this year. But for the last twenty-some years, there's been no barge traffic north of Kansas City. There used to be a daily barge, Omaha to Kansas City, a concrete barge. That has ceased. And I think there was a ceremonial one earlier this year, or maybe it was last year. And I know we spend, or not we, the city, but the government spends millions of dollars maintaining that channel, which isn't used because it's, it's no longer, you know, inland waterway to really speak of. But obviously, you have to build it to accommodate that, even though it's, isn't being used as such. Okay.
Yep.
Well, the Port KC has been starting to get pretty active in Kansas City, so I would expect there, there may be more.
More going up Omaha?
There were three operators on the river that were contracted, or contacted as part of our, when we were looking at the span arrangement for the river. And, and those three operators really liked the concept that we proposed.
And the Coast Guard.
Yes. They were, the operators were contacted via the Coast Guard.
Yeah, okay. Interesting. Okay.
I think St. Joe has also made some investments for wire rope manufacturing and using distribution, both rail and water.
The new bridge that connects on fifty-nine up Natchezon, how was that paid?
Traditional KDOT funding and fifty-fifty, basically. MoDOT paid for all the concrete and dirt in their state. We paid for the concrete and dirt in our state. And we, we split the bridge fifty-fifty.
And that, had that been on KDOT's work plan for many years?
Oh, yes.
So, that, that just didn't happen because of the flood?
It was in horrendous structural condition.
Yeah, okay. And ours is not at that point right now. It's still a solid bridge. I mean, that's one word that's good to know.
Yep.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Let's take about a five-minute break, allow them to gather.
Model stand.
Okay, we're back in session. The second item on the agenda is Retail Strategies. Paul?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Commissioner, this is a follow-up to the June seventh City Commission Study Session where Matt Pietro, the Chief Development Officer of Retail Strategies, provided an overview of his company and the services it offers to the commission. I was not at that meeting, but I understand that the commission was favorable to at least hearing a little bit more. Following that presentation, Retail Strategies submitted a proposal to the city. And in that, the financial commitment to the city would be a hundred and ten thousand dollars over three years, fifty thousand in the initial year. The initial year is a little more costly because it includes all the initial groundwork, the analysis, the report that they provide on the community. And then the subsequent years are when that act, that plan is put into action, when the proactive recruitment comes along. Before we get into the proposal, I did want to give the commission, I provided some information here on the likely funding source, should you choose to go this direction. It would be from the economic development portion of the countywide sales tax. And what I've showed you is the 2015 actuals, what we're looking at for 2016, and then going forward through what would be the life of this contract. As you can see in 2015, the reason I included this number was, you can see with the facade grants, the debt service on the downtown hotel land, which we paid for that with this fund. We overspent that year, about forty-four thousand dollars. Now, we have reserves and economic development fund from the countywide sales tax. It just carry forward from previous years that we didn't use at all. So, we're fine. We have about two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars in that reserve. Twenty-sixteen, should we do Retail Strategies this year, start them at the full amount for the first year, we would again need to dip into economic development reserves. However, they have indicated that should we want to start this year, we could structure the payments where fifty thousand would not necessarily be due this calendar year. As you can see, I did want to show you that, that you do have some flexibility, starting in 2017 and 2018, and into 2019, without any additional expenditures from that fund, when we drop that land acquisition debt service off. So, there is some available funding in that. The CPAC payment, it ends right off the page in 2020, so that also will open up in about five years. I did want to give just a brief background, since I wasn't here the last time, why we brought forward Retail Strategies. I think I've heard from the commission and from the community over the last couple of years, that LCDC does a good job with business and industry, and that there may be a need to more proactively state our case for retail and commercial development in the city. We do a good job when people approach us. We've tried reaching out to some retail firms. We provide them information. They look at what our traffic counts are, what our rooftops are. But a lot of times, it ends there. Retail Strategies suggested that they have some contacts, that they would be able to use not only the research and analytics, but then to be able to get in front of a lot of the commercial and retail market that we're looking at, as well as do a, a market analysis of, of what types of fits may be good for the city of Leavenworth. So, that's why I brought this proposal forward. It does allow you to get out of the contract year to year, should you choose to do that. I would say that three years is probably because, once they get started, it takes a while. Economic development is not an overnight type, type activity. In the actual item below, I've provided some options for you. You can also come up with whatever other options the commission desires. Number one would be, funds are available in 2016 with the carry-forward reserves, or you could limit facade grants. We have budgeted eighty-five thousand dollars. We've only spent about twenty thousand so far. We could do that in 2016. It's available in 2017 to start full, with full funding available, or staff could sort of work with Retail Strategies to start in 2016 with, with delaying some payments. The third option I felt that I wanted to share is that we could do an RFQ and talk to other firms. The reason we haven't done that is through my predecessor, Scott, myself, and then our Assistant City Manager, Taylor, we've spoken to a lot of these firms. We get these calls a lot. Retail Strategies, we checked the references. We liked the approach that they had in our purchasing policies. We don't have to go out for an RFQ on professional services. But we could certainly do that, should the commission feel that that was a prudent thing to do. So, tonight, I'm asking for your direction on how you would like to proceed. And I would come back with a contract, should you choose to go that way.
I would like at least another prospect to come talk to us and let us compare notes as to what, I've never been one to bite off the first thing that's offered to me. And secondly, I would be in favor of starting the project in 2017. That doesn't put us any deficit.
On the facade, I don't want to cut back the facade.
Yeah, and I don't want to cut back on anything. I don't want to go on any more debt.
Right.
Okay.
I, I don't mind having another RFQ. I think that you have done your homework on it. I was pretty impressed with them. They just didn't come in off the street. You'd already vetted them somewhat. If you can vet another one, come in and tell us. I'm in agreement that, I would like to get it started as soon as possible, as quickly we start it. If this thing has legs and it produces, we can get some, more retail in because their specialty is retail. But if we do it in 2016, I'm not in favor of drawing down any of our reserves. So, it'd have to come out of some, some portion of that budget because we do need those economic development reserves for, when those times come up that we have to buy some property and do some other things. But I would like to start it as soon as possible because, you know, the quicker we get this thing going, there's a chance that we can, you know, get some, that they're successful. Or, and as you say, we have a buyout clause or an out clause every year. If we see, after the first year, that we're just getting our change here, which I don't think we would, but that it's not producing, we can back out quickly. I'd like to see it go as quickly as possible. But, you know, and that's up to the commission.
I think if we had the money, you know, it would be fine.
Yeah, I don't want to...
We're already halfway through the year.
I agree. I don't want to draw down. I don't want to, you know, get into the budget items. The other thing that I'm thinking about, by the time we do the contract, they'd have roughly four and a half or five months. That's going into the winter months. I would think they'd be more productive as, as far as getting retail people down here. And if we went with this group or another group, towards the spring of the year, rather than going into a cold winter. And that would give us one complete year, so we could, you know, grade them on how they do, what we've got.
When you say 2017, when we go into budgeting here in a couple of weeks, could we, were you saying we could do that January, start January first, contract with them, so they have that?
We could. You actually won't see this when we go into budgeting in July, because this is out of the CIP funding. It's not operating budget.
Okay, it'd be October.
Yeah. It's, it's, it's interesting that it, there's a lot of transfers between this fund and the general fund to pay certain items, but it's not a general fund revenue source.
So, but, okay, let's say we do CIP in September, October. We could, in theory, start it January first, and we'd be in this 2017 line where we're not spending down any money, that we have the funds for it. And we could delay it to get, you know, quick on. And that's only, you know...
We, we would be, I'm confident that I could, if you chose to go this year in 2016, that we could structure the contract where, you know, your payment wouldn't be till January or February. But at some point, you got to catch up. But, yeah, I understand what you're saying as far as 2017.
Paul, I'm, I'm curious that you said, because I, I'm skeptical on this. You said that you get calls from other companies all the time, but you like their approach. What specifically did you like about their approach on, on Retail Strategies?
You know, I think the feeling was more of a full service. There's a lot of market analytics firms. There's a lot of people who work with, who come in and give you a snapshot of your community. I think maybe what we lack a little bit is the ability to take the next step. It's hard to develop contacts for a staff member because those sometimes take years to develop those kind of contacts with these different, these different businesses. You know, they're, as you saw at the commission, this study session, they're good at what they do. And, and we did check their references. We have seen, they sent us a couple of news articles from other cities where they had mentioned Retail Strategies had done a good job. So, that's really what's, what stuck out. And I felt that they were, the presentation was good enough to warrant coming to see you.
Yeah, because if you look at most of this, and we've done these before in companies, they're more on the analytical data. And we've been, I think, through enough of these, and also even with working with Main Street, that, that I'm really not interested in any more analytical data. I'm really clear where our market is and, you know, what we, you know, what our challenges and, you know, our positives and negatives are on that.
We want people to bring us business.
Yeah, I, I really do. And, and I'm still honestly for, if we had our own person, they could go to the same conferences and, and conventions. But I'm going to lose on that deal. Like, I, I know that. And I...
We figured out the cost was going to be so much more.
Well, it is. One person does cost a lot more.
Right.
Yeah. But the, the thing is, you, it's, it's not only is economic development the long haul, you never get it really totally on the least costly way to do it on that. That's why, to me, I'm just selfish. I want a person there looking for our own interest. And I've just never seen a company to be able to bring results like you have for your own person working for you on that. A lot, my biggest concern, and it's easy to flash a lot of companies' logos up there and, and get people excited about that. But on a good number of those, we don't meet the demographics for those yet. And that's...
And maybe that was what also appealed to me, but with Retail Strategies. They had done their homework before they called. They knew about the Command and General Staff College in Fort Leavenworth, the education level of the community, some of the disposable income numbers of the community. And sort of their pitch was, we can tell that story. We can get the meeting to tell that story.
Make the contacts.
To maybe get beyond.
And get the doors opened, more individual.
Yeah.
And you're absolutely right. They're, they're not going to guarantee anything. No company like this would guarantee an X number of, of clients or establishments that are going to be in the community. And there's a little bit of risk involved. But it's not, it can be contained, I guess would be the best way to...
Yeah. Well, and, and, because I'm looking for really those results, you know, I like it that it's, you know, if it's, we're not happy, you know, for over a three-year time. Although, I don't think we'll fully get service out of it if you don't really go into it thinking you're going to do the full three years on that. And since we are really halfway through 2016, I, I would look at 2017 projection and budgeting for that. It's, they're going to spend more time in this six months or that, just doing the analytical stuff. I mean, that's going to take a few months to do that at least, you know.
But they've done quite a bit of analytical stuff. I mean, they presented us quite a bit.
It was very, those are broad and general brushstrokes he brought for us. If you're, and that was just to whet our appetite. There should be, if you're paying them, it should be far more targeted.
Yeah, they're going to need no plots of land that are available. And if we can, if somebody's successful getting two or three name brands, whether it be Eatery's or Retail or something, get a couple of those, then if they, you can almost do, you know, they've done their job, and others will follow, once they see the competition or a successful business.
Hotel response.
Yeah, and I...
Once you start retailing, you'll, maybe not as much, but you'll see the same type of reality.
And a lot of the data is available free.
It is, it is, yeah.
But maybe, again, what, what I liked about theirs versus the other presentations was, again, the, the retail procurement plan, the prospective list, that's what we thought. And Taylor did a lot of work on this, too. And it's, it's a field he's been involved in that may, that they're maybe more strong in that second step, is kind of what we like.
Well, and I know that's hard for you and staff with, without a designated person, you know, to really do that. And it's, it's a lot of follow-up. And, and that takes a lot of time to do that. And if you don't have, like I said, you know, your staff is, is divided, even if you had Taylor, you know, do it. His still duties are still divided. And that would be hard for us to do that.
You're right.
And that, like, I, I don't know. I, I'm skeptical, but, you know, I can see that that's where the commission is leaning.
In the meantime, is there a consensus to bring in another group?
It is for me. If anybody else wants to.
I, I would, just really for comparisons and that. Because, I mean, I've, you know, seen several on that and...
If we're going to wait a few months anyway, why not?
Yeah, they've, they've been calling, so it will be alert.
Yeah, it may be that we still fall back on, on the one, we're talking on Retail Strategies.
Okay.
I'd still like to interview another one, just so I feel confident in my mind and rest of the commission.
That's great. Yeah, it's not a problem. It's not a problem.
Yeah, here's that one.
That's it for that?
Okay. Item number three is a quarterly report for Convention and Business Bureau. Hi, Kristy.
I'm the new mayor and commissioner, so everyone. I would like to give you a quarterly report on what's been happening with the Convention and Visitors Bureau so far these last couple of months. Social media analytics from January through June. Our Facebook page has 3,284 likes right now. We're averaging about 623 average daily impressions, so it's coming along nicely. I...we are trying to post to it at least two or three times a week and that, so we'll continue with that schedule. Our Twitter right now seems to be going really well. It's...but we have 449 followers, and we are following 693 people. So we've sent over 1,800 tweets in the last couple of months and had over 14,000 impressions on Twitter. So that seems to be going pretty well with everyone. Pinterest is going well. Everything's going social, it seems like. There's a lot of that out there. We've got 31 boards on our Pinterest account if anyone's...we've got it broke down into several different boards on there, so it's been going pretty good. 161 likes, 81 followers, averaging about 103 daily impressions on that, and 60 daily views on our Pinterest account. Website, in the last couple of months, we've had 31,800 page views. We have...and that's been accounted...9,159 unique users in order to come up with that. So there's been 9,159 people using the website and viewed it 31,000 pages in the last few months. 62% of those people are finding us via Google, just on a generic search and that, and 17% are coming directly through to our website, First City of Kansas, or Visit Leavenworth, Kansas. We've got the two URLs that they come into the same webpage. So something to think about or that I might look at in the future. We're getting quite a few overseas, United Kingdom, Brazil, Canada, Germany, whether we want to install some kind of translator. I know a lot of websites out there. If you click, they have translations across the top, you know, if you're, you know, German, and so you could...and their website automatically turns to German then, and they can read the whole website. So something to maybe consider in the future as far as our website goes. Some of the conferences and appearances, I think last time I spoke, I had mentioned that I was going to a couple. The African-American Trade Show that I went to in April in Cleveland, I had appointments with over 38 tour operators for that conference, and some of them were very interested in the Black History Tour and that, so I followed up with them, sent them all the information and that. But again, we'll be following up in probably another month or so, just kind of keeping that conversation going with them and see if we can't get some results from that. But overall, I think it was a pretty good trade show for us and that there, you know, and I think Tammy went to...we've only been to it two years now and that, and I think Tammy was the first to go to that. But I think if we can kind of keep that conversation going with them, we'll see some results from it. We attended the Kansas Sampler Festival in May, and there was 8,200 people that went through the Kansas Sampler Festival over the weekend down in Winfield and that. So even with the weather on Sunday, you know, it doesn't...never fails, you always end up having one of those days be bad weather. But anyway, we gave away a nice little overnight package to Leavenworth and that, and a lady from El Dorado won, and so I just want to take a minute and read her email to us. She was so excited. Anyway, it says, "Hello, Rosalie and Kristy. Your wonderful First City of Kansas basket arrived at my doorstep yesterday. What a treat to go through the basket looking at all the fun, wonderful things. And I must tell you, the basket arrived on our 43rd wedding anniversary, so that made opening the basket even more fun for us. Because of an overbooked summer, it will probably be close to the end of summer before we're able to come to Leavenworth, but when we come, we plan to arrive on Friday and stay till Sunday. As our summer schedule falls into place, I'll let you know when we have our weekend booked. Sincerely, Catherine Taylor." So I just thought that was pretty cool that she actually sent us a nice letter back. So our e-newsletter that we send out, basically our calendar of events keeps increasing. We keep adding, and in fact, we got several of the people from the Kansas Sampler Festival with email addresses and that added to it. So we're up to 303 subscribers currently, and the open rate on that is about 21% when we send it out as far as open rates. Visitors' guidebooks, 79 direct inquiries and mailouts, over 9,500 have been distributed so far. So we are down to only five boxes left. So they only printed 10,000 last year, and from what I found, previous records, it looks like we were printing around 20,000 each year. So I think I'll have to probably reorder in the next month or so, and so we'll probably have to get some bids out there and find out, get them reprinted. Some of the print that we've done already for this last couple of months, we're in the Travel Kansas 2016 magazine, we're in the State Visitors' Guidebook, Midwest Itineraries Group Travel Magazine, we've put in...purchased an ad, and then also the AAA magazines, Nebraska, Iowa, and Kansas ads are going out shortly, so we'll be covering all those with ads. Online advertising, just placed a few buys with the State Office of Tourism and their website. They're offered...they've got another company that comes in and sells advertising on the state website. It doesn't really look like advertising, but when you...when you pull up, say, actually we bought the History and Heritage page, the Ethnic and Cultural page, Things to Do page, and then a shopping header. Basically, it comes up when you pull up those sites, it comes up with a picture, and it's the picture of Leavenworth, and then you click through it, and it'll go right to our website. So they're selling those type of ads on it. So we did a buy through the State Office of Tourism and that. We've gotten a couple of good PR pieces lately. This is the Going on Faith magazine that just came out, and we're also in the Kansas magazine. Candle Queens Candle is in the Kansas magazine. I didn't bring a copy of that, but this is the Going on Faith. It's a group tour market, and I'm actually going to be attending this conference in August, August 8th through the 11th, I believe. It's going to be in California. But anyway, they did a nice spread on Kansas treasures, and we got the bottom half pages here along with a paragraph over there as far as the different tours that you should take in Kansas. So I thought that was a really nice spread. I can send that around if you'd like to kind of look through that. Let's see, memberships, kind of the same memberships as we talked about last time. Group tours, we've had three new day tours booked since the last time, a couple in August, and then one in the fall with Masterpiece Tours. And then actually just today, I got an overnight tour with Mayflower Tours that's already booked for next year, so August 17th and 18th of 2017, Mayflower Tours, as I was out of Illinois, and they'll be coming here for two nights next year, so I'm pretty excited about that one. Also, overnight tour, Leavenworth Family Reunion is going to be the end of July, so hopefully we'll probably roll out the red carpet a little bit for them, but Leavenworth Family Reunions, July 29th through the 31st and that, so working on that itinerary and that, but it's going to be exciting. They...I guess the way it sounds, they plan this every 10 years, so...
Cool, that's cool.
Yeah, it'll be...it'll be fun to be involved with that this year, so...
I was...Terry and I were at breakfast on the weekend, not this weekend, but the past one maybe it was, and we were coming out, and Rosalie was out there meeting a tour group. Yeah, they had purple shirts on. I can't remember who they were, but they had, but she was...yeah, she was like...so we waved to each other while she was busy doing her job, so thank her for that, yeah.
I will do that.
Even on the weekend.
Yes, that's...a lot of them come in on the weekends, so, yes, definitely on the weekends. A couple of new meetings booked, two meetings. We've got the Kansas State Department of Wildlife Parks and Tourism that will be here on July 22nd doing an updates as far as their tourism U. They basically go through their whole program and advise other CVBs in the area and chambers what all kind of services that they offer to the chambers and that, and how we can get on board with their co-op program and that. So they'll be here on July 22nd. And then also the Lidos is going to be holding a meeting on July 20th. The way I understand it's going to be the whole week, but he came and approached us, and we're going to do welcome bags for that meeting also, so that'll be pretty good. The way I understand, there's going to be people from all over the world here for that meeting, so...
And what meeting was that again?
Lidos.
Lidos.
They're a defense contractor.
Yeah, a defense contractor. And then the promotions, I guess that we're still working on the Veterans Traveling Wall that's booked for October 26th through the 30th. We're really starting to do our meetings on that. In fact, we'll meet tomorrow with the VFW and several service organizations to help with some of the programming of that and the ceremonies and that, so that's going to be taking up probably quite a bit of time between now and when it actually comes into town, so let's see. And looking ahead, I guess we should be getting our van pretty soon, so we're looking forward to that, and then also probably getting the wrap put on it after we receive it and that, so...and then I'm working with the Riverfront Community Center on redoing their brochure here. So I've met with Tammy already and Steve and that, so we'll start kind of putting this together and getting some bids and quotes on the price of reprinting this, and then also redoing the Leavenworth, Kansas Historical Wayside Tour and that. So a couple of brochures. Those are the two priorities that I'm going to try and move to the top of the pack for now and work on those in the next couple of months. So that's kind of what we've been doing in the last couple of months, so any questions...
We've been standing around and having...
Yeah, we seem to be keeping pretty busy, which is great.
Because he's good.
Yeah, it's been good.
That's great.
It's been really good.
Anybody have any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any concerns of the commission that want to talk about, bring it up?
I'll talk, and you'll talk.
You want to talk a little bit about your trip to Guantanamo?
Yeah.
Yeah, I can. I've written an article for the paper. I don't know when it's going to be in, but tomorrow, okay. Why don't you go ahead, Mark, and I'll cover what you know.
We had a very interesting and lightning trip to Gitmo. The mayor and I, Representative of the City, Todd Thompson, County Attorney, Senator Fitzgerald, Representative Willie Dove, and Representative Barton. Congresswoman Jenkins organized the trip. We had a couple people from the Office of Secretary of Defense. We had our Marine Escort Officers, about 10 of us that went down and flew out of Miami and Guantanamo on a Marine aircraft. We were met in brief by the Gitmo Commander, Rear Admiral Peter Clark, did an outstanding job, he and his staff, in a long hour and a half briefing or so. Admiral Clark is head of Corrections or Confinement, was an Army Colonel, had medical officer there, is Chief JAG Officer, is also a judge, Intelligence Officer, and Cultural Advisor since obviously they're middle...most, or not most, all detainees are Middle Eastern Muslims. We did have a cultural advisor to help ensure that, you know, they're doing things culturally proper. There's 80 detainees there. They range in age from 32 to 69 years old. There hasn't been a new detainee brought in to Gitmo since 2008, and they probably, I don't think they're banking on any more coming in. Costs $445 million a year to fund it, to operate it. It is completely separate operation from the Guantanamo Naval Base. And the Admiral was very clear, as were a few other people, because the question was asked, you know, are they closing this down? The administration wants to close down Guantanamo Naval Base, and he said, no matter what you hear in the media, whoever's saying it, that they want to close down the naval base, that's not even up there. This Gitmo is the political football, and he would...and he and his staff obviously would not bite on any question that leaned on anything political one way or another. They are there to do a mission, and they do it, and they do it very, very professionally. There's 2,000 personnel to guard those, 80 detainees. And I talked to...spent a lot of time with Admiral Clark and said, that's a lot. And he said, yes, if there's another place, you know, you could probably do it with, you know, 40 people or, you know, a smaller contingent. He said, but, you know, if something really goes wrong, I'm four to six hours from any type of air support or anything else. I need 2,000 people here to hold it until I can get resupplied or reinforcements, whether it be air, but people on the ground, I could be a couple of days away. So he said, that's why we're very, you know, heavy on the strength. We met with plenty of its...the military people there are Army, Marines, Airmen, Navy, and Coast Guardsmen, well-represented in all the services. All of them were very, very professional. They knew their job. I mean, it was, I mean, obviously a very, very well-run facility. We saw some of the detainees. We went to their cell blocks. We saw how they're housed. We went to the courtroom where the courtroom is, state-of-the-art courtroom with, you know, as you can well imagine. Have any of them come to trial yet? No, and ask, you know, the judge there, why is that? And he says, there are thousands of motions, you know, or somebody will make a motion on something else, and we have to rule on every one of them. They're not only covered by US law, but international conventions, so it is...it's...
It's complicated.
It's complicated. Makes the OJ trial look like, you know, probate court or something. So, well, that's going to be handled, and obviously they just do their job, and they're not commenting on anything else, and I think they do it very, very professionally. We're...I spent six years in the Army, deployed and in the States, and I'm one that never complains about food, and I never complained about the Army food. Everyone else complained about it, but I never complained about food in college. But the Army food's okay, but I always knew if you could ever get to a naval base and eat...the Navy always eats the best. I think the mayor will agree, we ate in the mess hall there. It was one outstanding lunch. It was just great.
It was bad energy, what it was on...
Yeah, it was just great, and...
And Congresswoman Jenkins really enjoyed it, did she?
Yeah, she had four or five of them. And it's run...it's civilian...it's run by a civilian contract. The Navy kind of oversees it, and the Navy always eats well. Well, it was fun to see, I saw some 21, 22-year-old kid, and he was in great shape. He had a plate, he had it piled like this high, just going like that. I tapped him on the shoulder and said, in 20 years, you won't be able to eat like that. I bet he had four or 5,000 calories right on that lunch plate, man. He was...and so the troops are very well taken care of. The housing, Gitmo was opened in 2002, and it was temporary, it was supposed to be there for three years. They built the housing, barracks, et cetera, to last two to three years. Obviously, we're in their 15th year there. There's a lot of rotting going on, you get a lot of seabreeze, salt air that just...
It's corrosive, yeah.
Very corrosive.
Yeah.
They're doing different things to shore them up. It does...it does need a lot of work, but, you know, they make do with what they have. It's a very...you think of Cuba as a tropical paradise. That part of Cuba, it looks like Arizona or Southern California in the dry season. There's cactus, rock, and that's it. It's hot and humid, but it's not tropical in...I mean, not lush tropical.
Yeah.
And...
Does no desire to vacation there.
No, that would not be a vacation spot. That's more in northern, northern, northwestern Cuba where all the tourists are going to be going when they do open that up. Guantanamo is 45 square miles, of which 20 square miles of it is probably the bay, the water, so it's not 45 square miles of dirt. And the US controlled that since 1898 after the War of 1898, Spanish-American War, and we paid...we leased it from Cuba for 20 years for like $2,500 a year, and then starting in 1915, I think we paid $4,500 a year, paid to the Cuban government, even when we fell apart from Cuba 50, 60 years ago. That's never...
Yeah, that's...
And Cuba's a couple of times that we want it back, and we just say it's international treaty, and they've never made a push for it. And it's a very critical naval base. We were briefed by a Coast Guard two-star Admiral in Miami before he left, and he's part of the Southern Command, and as well as Admiral Clark discussed the importance of Guantanamo Naval Base, not necessarily the detainee place. It's the naval headquarters for Southern Command, goes all the way down to, you know, southern Argentina, all the way down the Atlantic, you know, all the work that is done there. So it's very, very important to the national defense of the United States and the Western Hemisphere, and I think it will be there forever. No one's...
No, that's why I...
People are saying they want to get that one back.
No, and that's why I didn't ever think that that was part of it either. It was so much more than just the place where the detainees, even in its history on that. So that's, you know, it was made, you know, great soundbites for the media, but not an accurate picture of what really is going to happen.
The detainee area is completely separate from the naval area.
Yeah, I knew that.
We took a 20-minute Coast Guard skip right across the bay to get to the detainee area. So, but it's very, very interesting, and, you know, we...going in there, we were all, you know, we are against bringing them to Leavenworth or any other place, and after... all, you know, we are against bringing them to Leavenworth or any other place, and after seeing the operation they have there, you know, obviously, we're still against it, but they are doing an outstanding job in their mission that they have. If it would come to Fort Leavenworth, I'm sure the US Army would do an outstanding job doing it here. Let's hope that it doesn't come here. I know that it's off the table now, but who knows what, what happens. They do have some country, the population was as high as four hundred, I believe, Larry, did they say?
Guantanamo.
Yeah, and they've had, and they've gotten countries to accept many detainees, they have international delegations come in all the time, interview particular detainees, like, "Can we take four of them, take them back here?" Placed them all over, all over the world, they're down to eighty. These eighty are probably pretty much the hardcore ones that I don't think anybody really wants to touch, I'm guessing. Khalid Sheikh Mohammed, the mastermind of nine eleven is there, and quote nine eleven five, those are their top, I don't want to say priority, but top inmates. In fact, they have special holding cells in the courtroom for those five, you know, when they, they come in, because they are the big ones, but they're all, you know, people you don't want, probably don't want to have as your neighbor. And it was Ramadan, and those that don't know anything about Muslim faith, you don't eat from sunup to sundown, and obviously, you know, sundown gets a little bit later this time of year. We saw some detainees eating lunch, and, and they said, "Some of them observe it, some of them don't," and they also, some interesting things, so there's eighty of them, you'd think they'd all be together, tight-knit fraternity, there's guys that hate each other, they fight among each other, they have TVs they can watch, and some of them love watching The Housewives of Atlanta or something like that, while the other ones, you know, get mad at them because you're watching that.
They hide over the controllers more than.
Yeah, and the most checked-out book in the library is Fifty Shades of Grey, by a portion of them, but then there's another group that gets all mad at these guys for reading that type of stuff, so I, you know, it's like you put any eighty people together, you're going to like some of them, you're not going to like some of them, but there's, they have fights among themselves at times, and, but the guard force, one thing that's very interesting, Colonel Heath, who is, was, is the guard commander, it's not the proper term, but he's head of all the confinement, he said, "In the last year, there have been three hundred assaults inmate on guards, and there has not been one act of retaliation." Obviously, do self-defense retaliation, but, I mean, not, that's not retaliation, not one act of retaliation, and that speaks to the professionalism of these guards, of their training, of their mission, and keep in mind, many of them are nineteen to twenty-three years old, and that's pretty tough for a nineteen to twenty-three-year-old guy, come up, guy comes up and literally spits in your face that you don't want to say, you know, do that.
Yeah, a lot of self-control.
And there hasn't been one case retaliation in, what, two years or something like that.
They're pushing three years.
Yeah, yeah, so, I mean, that speaks to the professionalism of the soldiers, sailors, airmen, Coast Gardemen, and Marines that we have stationed there, so you can be proud of that, so.
Well, I concur to everything that Mark said, I think we've been in agreement on most of that, especially that we don't want it here.
Correct.
It would not fit in Fort Leavenworth. It would create more problems plus the expense, I mean, with a four hundred, roughly four-hundred and fifty million dollar a year budget, plus all the extras. But I do, again, with Mark, want to compliment the guard force over there, they do an excellent job. I think it's a shame, and Mark might disagree with me, that the detainees are housed better than what our guards are, and.
I don't disagree with you, I just know that's.
They have deplorable sanitation systems, showers and restrooms, and there's really nothing for them to do, and they're off hours other than volleyball, which, never seen anybody out there, and I don't think you would.
They do have softball leagues, he said.
Yeah, the softball leagues, but, and that's more on the base side than the little, little building, or was it a tent or a building where they had?
Yeah, a little day room.
Little, little day room with computers in it.
Yeah.
That was it, so.
And that's where they enjoy going, because they said the internet's faster, the internet they have in their barracks, they say, is slower than dial-up. And as the mayor said, the condition of the barracks leave a lot to be desired, the corrosion, you know, they're patching it together, they're cinder block things with rebar, the rebar has been rotting, rusting out, now they're putting in false walls, and they're wooden, plywood false walls just to hold them up.
Just.
Yeah, and obviously, the cells, detainee areas, are much more solidly built, you know, if you lived in one of those barracks, you could carve your way out of that with a toothbrush, because it's just rot, and you're not going to be able to carve your way out of this detention center. And if they, somehow, someone would escape and get through the fence, they would last an hour and a half, because you need water. I mean, they, every place you went, somebody was handing you water, they had big Coleman coolers, and bigger than Coleman coolers, just filled with ice water everywhere, and I asked the admiral, I said, "Man, I'd love to have the water."
Contract.
Contract for this thing, he says, "We bring in hundreds, if not thousands, of pallets a week on our barge of water." Just, you know, the sixteen-ounce bottles of plastic, and they're handing them to you all the time, and you need.
You got off of a bus, or back on one, or on a boat, or off a boat, in a building or out of building, you were inundated with the water.
But, you know, if you did, you know, get through the fence, you'd last an hour, unless you had, because there was no other fresh water around.
Well.
I want to thank you guys for going and representing us. I think that was short notice, and I'm glad that you two could go.
It was very eye-opening.
Well, and I, and also too, because when, I did like the, a lot of the interviewing when it came up again, and, and it was just like, and most of it was with the reporters coming with their own agenda, but it's like, "Well, have you ever seen it? How do you know you're going to be against it?" And it's like, a couple of them, I said, "You know, you know, I don't need to see cancer to know I don't want it," you know, type of thing, but at least it's taken that argument off the table, that, you know, that, and I do appreciate your going there, and, you know, people asked you, you know, if I was, and I was offered, and I asked some people, I said, "No, we have two of us, it was our expense that we went to this," you know, so, like I said, but I appreciate both of your guys, you know, going there on that, that was, you know, one of the conditions on that. So I said, "No, this is not something that we're going to have a regular field trip on, you know, going to," you know, it was a one-time deal, and explained some of the logistics challenges, you know, that you had to go through to do that, but I think that's something that as long as they have those detainees, we're going to have to be vigilant, because I think the constant thing that they're going to look at, you know, is the cost, you know, that's easy to shout that out and say, "Well, it is less," but again, you know, it's, the devil is in the details, and how much it would, you know, cost to rebuild that structure that they have there and that, and I think those are just some of our solid arguments that we keep.
I think the cost thing will come up again.
Yeah.
Because it is four-hundred and fifty million a year, probably goes up, and if they would, you know, I know there's prisons other way in the US, not just Leavenworth, that could house them, they have secure facilities, and obviously, you could do it cheaper than four-hundred and fifty million dollars a year, because all it takes is support it. I'm hoping that it stays down there and this, and these eighty detainees get resolved, but, but it, once again, well-run, and I think we'll be proud of all the soldiers and sailors, Marines there representing us and doing a very tough mission. We had lunch, one young man, who, he's getting out of there after a year and ten days, he's moving back to Leavenworth, he bought a house on Tenth Avenue, just north of Family Video, and he said, "Is, can I call you when my trash isn't picked up?" I said, "No, call Mike McDonald." No, I said, "No, you can call me."
Yeah, we had a table set up for us for any of the troops that were from Kansas.
Yeah, yeah.
So we eventually had lunch with our comrades.
Yeah, it was very good.
It was very light-hearted, had a little fun doing that, and they all asked for jobs.
Yeah, yeah. So it's, and, and we're represented well by our state legislation, as well as Todd Thompson, and just interesting how they do things, and they're, quote, culturally sensitive to, to the detainees, and, because they've got the eyes of the world on them, International Red Cross is in there all the time, other NGOs, non-government organizations come in quite often. ABC News was coming in this week to do another special, so it's run very, very well, and I've, I worked, I have worked and still worked with quite a few Muslims in various countries in the world, and traveled to a lot of Muslim countries, and can understand some of the intricacies of what they have to deal with to make sure it's all according to oil, because, you know, if you don't know that culturally, it's, it's different, but they respect the religious part of it very well, and they're not getting out of there.
Unless they're taken out.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
If there's nothing else, we are adjourned.
Thank you.